All right. Good evening. For the record, it's Thursday, October 11th, 2018. It's 5:15 PM. Time for the regular meeting of the Wenatchee City Council. I've called the meeting to order. The first item is always the pledge to our flag. Councilmember Kulas, would you lead us?
Thank you. Please rise. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilmember Kulas. Roll call this evening. Councilmembers Bailey and Huffaker are not with us today, but we do have a quorum with the five that are here. The first item on this evening's agenda are the consent items, which includes the agenda, and I do need to add an item regarding executive session regarding real estate items. I think Councilmember Kulas may have that.
Yes, Your Honor.
Vouchers in the minutes.
I'd make a motion that we adopt the consent items, which include this evening's agenda with the addition of Agenda Item 10 now being Executive Session to discuss real estate matters and moving the term, of course, then to Item Number 11. This includes the vouchers and the minutes from our previous meetings.
Second.
A motion by Councilmember Kulas, the second by Councilmember Markhart, to approve this evening's consent items, including the agenda as amended to add Executive Session Regarding Real Estate Matters as Item Number 10, the vouchers that were in your packet this evening, and the minutes from the previous meetings. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item on our agenda would be Citizen Comment. This would be a time that any member of the audience would like to address the City Council on something that's not on today's agenda. We'd ask that you come up, give us your name and address for the record. Come on up.
And really briefly, she's just here to say thank you. Over a month ago, she came to a city council meeting to bring up a concern that she sells at Met Hall Park and had had issues with selling there for the future, and so she brought those concerns to you. And she has had someone reach out to her and has gotten help, so she's here to say thank you.
Someone from the Health Department, I hope.
[Spanish] Yes.
Good.
But there was follow-up with that, so she just wants to say thank you.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Anybody else wish to address? Oh, Manuel.
Okay. Thank you for giving this opportunity to... Okay, so... Estoy aquí para dar las gracias por todos los proyectos que se han logrado y que siguen realizándose.
He's here to say thank you for everything that has... all the work that has been done and that is being worked on.
Y también para hacerles una cordial invitación de nuestro próximo evento, que será este sábado de una a seis de la tarde.
And he's here to invite you all to the next Una event. That's this Saturday from one to six at Kiwanis Met Hall Park.
Esperamos verlos por ahí. A todos también invitados y serán bien recibidos.
And he wants to invite each and every one of you, and that we hope to see you there, and you'll be welcomed at our event.
Tendremos algunos antojitos que tal vez les van a gustar, que son tacos de asada, adobada, y de pollo.
There will be tacos of different kinds of meat, chicken and different kinds of meat.
Manuel, are you cooking?
Ah, no.
You're checking.
But voy a estar ahí ayudando.
He'll be there, and he wants to make sure everyone that here is invited.
Y dar las gracias a cada uno de los representantes del City Council por ver distribuido en distritos todo el Valle de Wenatchee.
And he also would like to thank the City Councils for the...
Por haber logrado que se hicieran...
For the redistricting, to think that that happened.
Y pues muchas gracias por representarnos, y gracias a Linda por estar al pendiente de nuestra comunidad del Valle de Wenatchee.
I personally thank Linda and thank everyone for helping.
Quiero resaltar el apoyo que se nos ha dado de parte de Ramon, que es el manager de la LOOS, nos ha hecho muy fuertes, y esta vez va a tener demasiadas donaciones para nuestra comunidad.
And that UNA's received multiple donations from the community, and just wants to highlight that from the work that's been done.
La LOOS, Esther.
And the LOOS.
Okay, so, pues muchas gracias, y espero verlos ahí.
And he says again, "Thank you," and he hopes to see you there.
Thanks, Manuel.
Manuel.
I'll see if I can make it there.
I would like to get together with you and just visit with you when you have time.
Yes, in the next meeting I can...
Okay. Let me give you my card.
Yes. I don't have too many flyers, but...
That's fine. How are you?
We got one the other day.
Yeah, just the one for the...
Done.
Thanks, Manuel.
Buenas tardes, mi nombre es Teresa Cepeda, y yo vivo en la 1119 Rosewood, aquí en Wenatchee.
And good evening, my name is Teresa Cepeda, and I live in 1119 Rosewood in Wenatchee.
Y yo vine esta tarde solamente para agradecerle todo el trabajo que han hecho durante un periodo largo de tiempo, para pensar y discernir si podían redistrictar o dividir la ciudad. Yo sé que fue mucho trabajo, muchísimas gracias por eso. Quiero darle las gracias porque tomaron esa decisión de hacer esa subdivisión, entonces ahora yo les agradezco mucho porque me di cuenta muy fácilmente como la señora Linda estuvo muy al pendiente de nosotros el día de las fiestas mexicanas.
She would just like to thank you for the time that it took all of you to decide over a long period of time and to see if the redistricting would be best for our community, because she wants to acknowledge that it took time, and so she'd like to say thank you for that, and also specifically highlighted that Linda was at Fiesta Mexicana, where she was...
Ella pertenece donde nos tocaba.
Well, in her district, so people were able to see her there and was out with all the people, so...
Sí, ella, quiero darle las gracias también a ella personalmente porque estuvo muy al pendiente de nosotros en nuestras fiestas mexicanas.
And that she was at the Fiesta Mexicana, and her being there, pendiente.
Al pendiente quiere decir que estuvo ahí en el puesto, estuvo atendiendo a la gente...
She was attentive, pendiente.
Y también estuvo, pues, poniéndose los trajes mexicanos con nosotros y bailando, se metió en la fiesta con nosotros. Muchas gracias.
And she just wanted to thank, she even put on one of the traditional Mexican folkloric dresses and really embraced the culture, and she danced. That was...
Pero ella estuvo en el puesto.
Oh, but you were at the booth.
Yeah, I was there. I got it on video.
Muchísimas gracias por estar con nosotros.
She wants to just thank you.
And I want to thank both of you for your work on Met Hall Park, both of you for...
Thank you.
Getting that organization and neighborhood going, and we're excited to get that to the finish line, so thank both of you for that.
So are we. Thank you.
Be back.
I know what time you can attend it, around four o'clock or...
For the Una?
Yes.
If I go, I'm going to be there early, like right at one.
One?
Yeah. Is it one to four? Yeah.
Okay.
If I go, I got to be there pretty early, because I have another place to be. Okay. Yes, sir. Come on up.
My name is Jeff Setton, and I reside at 1514 West Road Avenue in Wenatchee, Washington. I got a little of that. Honorable Mayor and honorable Councilmember and Mayor Wenatchee, my name is Jeff Setton, and I have had the privilege to volunteer with Velocity Swimming for the past nine years. Velocity Swimming is Wenatchee's only year-round competitive swim program. Their mission is to promote the development of life skills through the sport of swimming. As part of Velocity's mission, we host swim meets to give our youth the opportunity to compete. It gives them the opportunity to learn their rewards of hard work and how to work through disappointment and adversity. For the last three years, I've had the... I have led the planning and coordination efforts of our swim meets, and this is part of why I've come here tonight. Each summer, Velocity Swimming hosts two swim meets at the City of Wenatchee's public pools. These two events bring in over 400,000 in sports tourism-related dollars based on the analysis provided by the Wenatchee Valley Sports Council. One of these meets, the Apple Capital Open, always ranks in the top four for sports tourism dollars based on the economic impact to our valley. This success is due in part to the support of this community and the City of Wenatchee. I want to personally, as both a representative for Velocity and myself personally, thank all the city staff that have helped make these events so successful, especially Carol Andre and David Erickson and their staff. We as a club and as a resident are blessed to have the only outdoor ten-lane pool in the state of Washington. This pool is a true gem to the city and the greater community. This facility allows the city to continue programming for water safety and provides a safe and supervised environment for the youth of this valley to cool off, learn to swim, play, and socialize with friends and family. It is great to hear that the city is working to keep this gem by prioritizing capital improvements to this facility, such as the completed improvements to the changing rooms, the new guard chairs, and the planned replacement to the pool liner. As the budget process is refined and department budgets are adjusted to balance the projected incomes, we would ask the council to keep this asset a priority in both capital improvements and operational errors, so that this gem of a facility will continue to serve our great city for the foreseeable future. Thank you.
Thanks, Jeff. And I know we're planning on doing the liner. I don't know if it's going to be in 2019. I can't remember what Dave said, so I know we're working on that. We are concerned long-term about the pipes underneath the pool, and we just keep trying to keep it going as long as we can.
I appreciate that.
At some point, the replacement cost is something we're really going to have to deal with at some point, and we have been fortunate that we haven't had to deal with it yet, but we're trying.
Just asking to keep it important to that, and it's a real asset to that, as I've mentioned, it's the only...
I didn't realize it was the only ten-liner in the state.
Only ten-lane state in the state of Washington.
Outdoors.
Outdoor ten-lane pool. If you want to... You can go to the King County Aquatic Center, and it's got more indoors, but as an outdoor pool, it's the only ten-lane. The next one is actually in Pendleton, Oregon.
We got to stay up at Pendleton, though. Thanks, Jeff.
Thank you very much, Councilmember.
Poke in the Antico Camp. Exactly. All right. Anybody else wish to address the City Councils? Any items that aren't on today's agenda? See no takers. We have two presentations tonight. Of course, one of my very favorite ones is Make a Difference Day, and I see Margie Kerr is here, so who's got that to read in the record?
I do.
Councilmember Harold.
Whereas, this is the 28th year for Make a Difference Day. Whereas, each year thousands of people throughout the greater Wenatchee Valley join in this effort to make the place we live better for everyone. Whereas, bridges between communities have been lit, parks have been renovated, food banks have been filled, social service programs have been boosted, hiking trails have been restored, graffiti has been removed, home repairs have been done for the elderly, and disabled ballparks have been improved. Neighborhoods have cleaned and celebrated together. It is no small effort by a huge number of people, neighborhoods, schools, agencies, businesses, churches, and organizations. We join efforts with each other for the good of each other. We invite everyone to find a project at www.wenatchiemkdd.com or post their project there. We invite people to spend time Saturday, October 27th, doing a good deed, large or small, that makes a difference in our community or the lives of the people in it. We invite people in the Wenatchee Valley to act on this model. When there's a need, do a good deed. Now therefore, I, Frank J. Coontz, Mayor of the City of Wenatchee, do hereby proclaim Saturday, the 27th day of October 2018, Make a Difference Day, in the City of Wenatchee, and encourage the citizens of this beautiful valley to join in this effort to make the place we live better for everyone. In witness whereof, I hereby set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Wenatchee to be affixed on this 11th day of October 2018. Frank J. Coontz, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Harold.
Okay.
Come on up. How are you?
I saw you were hot.
Yes.
Literally, you were hot.
Hey, what's a hot dog?
Oh, take off that sticky.
Thank you, Anna. You want to say a few words?
I'll...
There you go.
On behalf of Laurel Hilton, who was supposed to be here, she might still be finding parking. Thank you so much for the...
Do you have a parking problem?
I don't know. Thank you for the proclamation. You might wonder what we do with these. Last year, well, I usually put them in our scrapbook, and last year we had a scrapbook that we submitted online to the national organization, and for our efforts in the valley, we won another $10,000. So all told, over the years of 28 years, I think we made $47,000 for our community. So we want to keep this going, and it's because of all you that it's a success, so we appreciate your support all the time. Thanks.
Thanks, Margie. Appreciate all you do for us. Give this back. We have another proclamation this evening regarding Code Enforcement Officer Appreciation Week. Who's got that?
I have it.
Councilmember Esparza.
Whereas, code enforcement officers provide for safety, health, and welfare of the citizens in the communities throughout the state of Washington through the enforcement of local codes or ordinances dealing with various issues of building, zoning, housing, animal control, environmental, health, and life safety. And whereas, code enforcement officers often have a challenging and demanding role and often do not receive recognition for the job that they do in improving living and working conditions for residents and businesses of local communities. And whereas, the role of many code enforcement officers has expanded in recent years with the increased number of foreclosed and abandoned homes in communities impacted economically. And whereas, code enforcement officers are dedicated, highly qualified professionals who share the goals of preventing neighborhood deterioration, enhancing and ensuring safety, and preserving values through knowledge and application of housing, zoning, and nuisance codes and ordinances. And whereas, code enforcement officers often have a highly visible role in the communities they serve and regularly impact with a variety of state, county, first responder, and legislative boards, commissions, agencies, and bodies within the capacity of their role in the community. And whereas, code enforcement officers are called upon to provide quality customer service and excellence to the residents and businesses of the communities in which they serve. And whereas, the Washington Association of Code Enforcement wants to recognize and honor code enforcement officers and professionals all across the state of Washington and bring awareness to the importance of code enforcement to the communities of the state of Washington. And whereas, the Washington Association of Code Enforcement was established in 1988 for the purpose of providing ongoing training and support for code enforcement professionals working in the state of Washington. Now therefore, be it proclaimed by Mayor Frank J. Coontz, Mayor of the City of Wenatchee, Washington, the week of October 22nd through the 26th of 2018, as Code Enforcement Officer Appreciation Week in the City of Wenatchee, and call upon its citizens of the City of Wenatchee to join in recognizing and expressing their appreciation for the dedication and service by the individuals who serve as our code enforcement officers. In witness whereof, I hereby set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Wenatchee to be affixed on this 11th day of October 2018. Frank J. Coontz, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Esparza. Mr. Fairbanks, come on up. Good, good. Always nice to see you. Get your picture taken, Yolanda.
[laughing]
I won't even talk about what happened to Masawa.
Okay.
What? Thank you, sir. Do appreciate you can say a few words?
Sure.
Into the microphone or grab a thing?
I can do this one. Thank you, Mayor and Council. I'd just like to accept this proclamation on behalf of myself and my partner Lance Mertz, who couldn't be here tonight. He decided to go take some vacation time, and Yolanda Garcia, who's our coordinator. Although I'm on the State Board, I did not write this long proclamation, but they did leave out that we get that week off, I think. But anyway, thank you very much, and we'll keep working hard for the city.
Thanks, John. I appreciate everything you and Lance do. It's not an easy job, and the two of them along with Yolanda, they accomplish a lot for our city. Even just yesterday, I was in a neighborhood, and it's difficult to see a neighborhood of both sides of the street, all the houses are in great shape, and then you have one code enforcement issue that's causing issues throughout the neighborhood, and these two do the best they can to get out in front of all that, so that's not an easy job, and I appreciate what you do.
Thank you.
Thanks, John. All right. Interlocal agreement with Columbia River Drug Task Force, Chief Crown.
Thank you, Mayor and the City Council. Steve Crown, Chief of Police. The action before you is an agreement with the Columbia River Drug Task Force. This is an interlocal agreement between the City of Wenatchee, Washington State Patrol, County of Shalan, and the City of Wenatchee, East Wenatchee. This is basically operational. It has tenants within it, how each party will act within the Columbia River Drug Task Force. We're asking that the City Council approve the mayor's signature to the agreement so that we can get it routed to the other partner agencies within the Columbia River Drug Task Force. Be happy to answer any questions.
I had one out of curiosity.
Sure.
In Section 4, it talks about the Columbia River Drug Task Force, and it mentions those agencies along with Douglas County.
Mm-hmm.
And yet Douglas County isn't listed as a party to the agreement. I'm just curious as to why and how does that work?
Douglas County has opted out at this time for the time being. They've stayed in the agreement until such time as they will opt in. Currently, in order for them to buy back into the Columbia River Drug Task Force, it would require them to pay a $40,000 buy-in fee that helps us keep operations up, but until such time, I don't know if you attended the forum down at PAC last night, but one of the statements made by them is they are actively looking to get financial support from the commission in order to get an officer hired, or deputy hired, and then they would implement and also ask for the buy-in money to get back in.
Okay.
So we're hoping, fingers crossed, that that happens.
Yeah. Thank you.
My question was, how do you choose who is the lead agency? I know it's by majority vote, but like, does somebody just volunteer, or does someone look up to who...
Actually, it's kind of pretty simplistic in that which agency has the expendable staff, and Wenatchee has not had that for a number of years. The City of Wenatchee was lead agency for a number of years, and for, I think, at least the last eight years, Shalan County has served that role. They absorb the cost, part, I think it's 50% for the administrative assistant that helps keep the records, records retention, and all the other accounting functions that are done by that person. So if you ever saw the day where the City of Wenatchee would like to take that lead role, they would simply do it by majority vote at an executive board meeting.
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions for the chief? If not, I'd entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion for the City Council to approve the interlocal cooperative agreement with the Columbia River Drug Task Force and authorize the mayor's signature.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Poyer, second by Councilmember Harold, to authorize the mayor's signature on the agreement, interlocal cooperative agreement with the Columbia River Drug Task Force in the City of Wenatchee. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Would you mind telling the council how our little camera up at Skyline Drive did this week?
Sure. So it took all of about five minutes of the installation and going live for... Actually, I had Jim Brown, our iSg guy, come up and load it onto my cellphone, and so our school resource officer happened to be walking, and I heard his voice, and I said, "Jared, come on back. I want to show you an app that I would like to have installed on your phone." Most of the problem that we're having at Skyline Drive are high school-age kids. Jared does a great job. Jared Reinfield does a great job of buzzing up there whenever he can. While I was showing him the zoom capability of the cameras, zooming in on license plates and showing that, I happened to see some drug paraphernalia flash in the back window. Jared immediately said, "I got to go." And so within a short amount of time, I see in the camera as I'm watching it, Jared walk up to the vehicle, and within five to 10 minutes, he also had one subject under arrest for a warrant and several other canisters of drugs. And so made an impact following day. We got our signs up at the location saying, "Hey, you're being watched." So word's out, but I'm certain that we'll probably catch more.
Yeah. I just thought it was funny. They were just looking at their phones, trying to figure out the camera works, and they got someone right away.
So it must be pretty clear then for you to look...
Crystal clear.
Wow.
And what's amazing about it for evidence purposes, you literally have a function where you... There's a little camera icon where you can touch on the screen, and it takes a still photo of that particular point in time, and then you can add that to your case. So I've got some photos if you want to see them.
Thanks, Chief. I thought you'd all like to kind of hear how that went, because it took us a while to get that camera installed, and so... All right. Next item is regarding an appointment to the Wenatchee Planning Commission. Glenn.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. We had three applicants come before the Planning Commission, applying for a vacant Planning Commission seat. It's pretty exciting when you have that much interest in serving in the boards and commissions of the city. All great candidates. The Planning Commission recommended that Josh Jorgensen be considered for appointment, and he is the manager at Mission Ridge and also on the chamber, and so we forward... The Planning Commission forwards that recommendation to you for your consideration, and the Planning Commission was hopeful the other two members who applied consider applying for other positions on boards, because they're all great candidates.
Great. Thanks, Glenn. I'd entertain a motion if we had one.
Your Honor, I move to approve Resolution Number 2018-34, appointing Josh Jorgensen as a voting representative to the Wenatchee Planning Commission to fill an unexpired term ending December 31st, 2019.
Second. Motion by Councilmember Harold, second by Councilmember Markhart, to adopt Resolution 2018-34, appointing Josh Jorgensen to the Planning Commission to fill an unexpired term ending December 31st, 2019. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thanks, Glenn.
Thank you.
Josh will be great.
Oh, yes.
Yeah, he'll do a great job. All right. Next up is a resolution regarding setting a public hearing to vacate a portion of a city right of way. City Engineer Gary Owen.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. I have a resolution here for you tonight. Actually, John Ajax in the Community Development Department has been doing a lot of the legwork on this, and if you had a chance to look at your packet, we've got some excess right of way behind the sidewalk on Pier Street. I'm not sure why. We didn't move it over maybe when we did our final design on it, when we did the Riverside Drive project and everything, but that was noted by the owner of the property and a developer that would like to take advantage of that for the eventual construction potentially of a hotel on that parcel. So we're more than happy to process their vacation petition and request. like to take advantage of that for the eventual construction potentially of a hotel on that parcel. So we're more than happy to, to process their vacation petition and request. Prelimarily, I don't see any reason that why we, why we, why I wouldn't recommend going ahead and vacating that, that right of way. The only question I don't have answered fully at this point is whether or not the city incurred any costs in, in acquiring that right of way a number of years ago. And I'll research that before the hearing and let you know whether that be the case and whether I would recommend that the city try to be reimbursed for any of the costs of that or not.
Yeah, that was my question. Do we get reimbursed for cost or do we sell it based on square footage? What do you do with city right of way when you are no longer using it?
We don't have a policy. Our practice has been basically, if, if it didn't cost us anything and it was just, it was dedicated, like a lot of the, a lot of public rights of way are, then we vacate it at, at, at no cost. And I think there, not in my tenure, but I think prior to me, I think there may have been some discussions of, of maybe recouping a portion of the cost. The law allows us to recover a portion of the, of the cost of acquisition.
We have actually set amounts, particularly in commercial and industrial areas for payment. And I recall one on the ferry in Columbia.
Yeah, I remember that, yeah. Yeah, I think we've done it at least in the past because I remember doing it once and Mike Walker got out his checkbook because we'd come up with a deal and he wanted to write the check.
You want to know how to spell your name to leave a check with you.
Yeah, wanted to be able to get it to the City Council to get it done. So I'm certainly fine dedicating this. I just, my only issue is should we be remunerated in some form?
Yeah, so I, I will get to the bottom when I can get with Steve King of the acquisition and how the.
And, and not that we'd do that way, but maybe also what is, what are the current assessments per square foot down in that area would help us if we were to talk about other sort of compensation.
Yeah, and how reimbursement went with the L and I, the LID and that sort of thing. I don't know the details of that yet, but I'll, I'll get them for you before we have the hearing.
I do, I do think as this traded hands, at least I think it has traded hands, we did get all of our LID for this parcel. I think this has traded hands already if I, if I remember correctly. Brad's nodding his head like, yes, it did.
Yeah, wasn't it Camcon or something like that? And now it's, the owner's like an LLC, Riverside LLC.
So your honor, I'd make a motion that we approve Resolution 2018-35, initiating the vacation of a portion of the city right of way along Pierre Street.
Second. Motion by Councilmember Kula, second by Councilmember Poyer, to approve Resolution 2018-35, initiating the vacation of a portion of the city right of way along Pierre Street. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thanks, Gary.
Thank you.
All right, we have one public hearing item. This is regarding our property tax ordinance for 2019. So I'll turn it over to Brad Posenjack, our Finance Director. We'll hear from him. We'll have questions for him. And then we'll turn it over to any members of the audience that wish to address the council. And then we'll turn it back over to the council for any action that they may be interested in taking. So Finance Director Posenjack, I'll turn it over to you.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. We, I have before you ordinance, an ordinance and a resolution. Start with the ordinance 2018-28, which authorizes the 2019 regular property tax levy. The 2018 levy was about 3.3 million after we take the, this proposes to take the 1%, the regular 1% that can be added on, which is about $30,000. And then when we add in the estimated new construction and annexation costs. And then the, the one, the one difference in what you normally see on these property tax levies is to utilize our bank capacity for a new city hall remodel and the debt payments that go along with that. So that's the $330,000 amount that adds on to this for a total 2019 levy of 3.7 million, which the change in this is probably going to be approximately $30 a year for somebody who owns a $300,000 home. Then the resolution, Resolution 2018-33, it reauthorizes for 2019, a bond levy that was approved by the voters in 2001 to be used for debt service payments on the police station. So this is something that's been going on since 2001. We've got a couple more years left on it before it goes away. So I am happy to answer any questions you may have.
So the, the Finance Committee discussed this today. And so obviously, this is our standard, normal property tax. We've talked about the federal building and needing to get to the bond market at some point, probably be going to the bond market, I'm guessing sometime in 2019, although interest rates are sort of creeping up. So we might want to start thinking about that. But we're looking at probably 21 or 22 years of a little bit of property tax to help fund the $10 million remodel of the federal building. So this is sort of part one. We do expect the bond ordinance that would solidify years, the next 20 years, probably in the next month or so.
Yep, hopefully November 8.
Yeah, maybe sooner. And then the police station one is one that's been ongoing, is voter approved. And so this is just acknowledging the voter approval and asking the treasurer to collect the money for us.
Yep.
Any questions for Brad? Not seeing any questions. Any member of the audience wish to address the council on this public hearing item regarding the 2019 property tax levies? See no takers. I will turn over to the council for their action.
Your honor, I make, please go ahead. I defer.
I will make a motion to approve ordinance number 2018-28, authorizing an increase in the regular property tax levy to be collected in the 2019 tax year.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Sparza, second by Councilmember Markhart, to approve ordinance 2018-28, authorizing an increase in the regular property tax levy to be collected in the 2019 tax year. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
I'd make a motion to approve Resolution 2018-33, requesting the Shalan County Assessor to collect sufficient funds to address debt service requirements of a voter-approved bond levy.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Kula, second by Councilmember Harold, to approve Resolution 2018-33, requesting the Shalan County Assessor to collect sufficient funds to address debt service requirements of a voter-approved bond levy. Discussion?
Is that really properly worded? The assessor doesn't collect money, they appraise.
They, well, that's the language we've been using for years.
I know, but it just dawned on me that, I know we've asked the assessor to set a levy.
I think the assessor, yeah, the assessor levies it and then the treasurer collects it.
The assessor's the one that's got to put on the property tax rolls, right? The treasurer.
And, and set the levy.
Yes.
That's interesting. Well.
So what the assessor's doing is setting the levy to collect and the treasurer actually collects. So it's probably correct, but needs a little smithing.
For next time.
Oh, I'll make a note of that. It seems to have worked the last 17 years. So we'll see.
And I've been around about that long.
All right, any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thanks, Brad. That closes our public hearing items tonight. So the next item on our agenda is a first full council look at our preliminary 2019 budget. So Brad, I'll turn it over to you. And I know we've got a bunch of papers in our.
Yeah, so you should have the preliminary budget summary. And so basically how we came up with the current state of the 2019 budget is we started with the 2018 initial budget. We estimated the salaries and benefits, the regular salary and benefit increases. We added that on to it. We looked at the different interfund payments that we make within the city. We made projections for those, built those in. Then we made our revenue projections just to make sure that, because a lot of our revenues are going to be changing, slightly increasing a little bit next year. And then, then we, the Finance Committee reviewed 95 or so requests for budget, for new budget appropriations for 2019. And today we looked at those again. Those are built into, some of them made the cut, some of them didn't. Those are built into the preliminary budget that you have in front of you. When all's all said and done with the general fund, the recurring revenues and expenses are, are currently balanced with the, with the net being a positive $8,000. And then the non-recurring, those are one-time, those are going to be one-time expenses in the 2019 budget. And so those, those are actually quite a bit up from 2018's budget. However, the city has a very healthy fund balance in the general fund. So some of these one-time expenses are gonna, are gonna spend off a little bit of the reserve that we have, as well as some of that non-recurring that one time includes a $500,000 transfer to the rainy day fund to help, to help future sustainability of the city in case we get another recession as they expect us to in a, in a year or two. The other fund, from, from where we're going from here, we've got a, I think we've got another, another discussion, another review of this budget on November 1st. And then, November 1st? November 8th? I have that somewhere.
Almost two days.
November 1st. And then we'll adopt, we'll adopt the final budget on November 15th. So going, in between now and November 1st, we are going to be looking at capital projects. So this doesn't have capital projects built into this budget yet. So there's, there are a number of capital projects that the city is wanting to tackle in 2019. So I'm working with departments to gather that information and add it to this budget so that on November 1st, you will see that. So if you've got any questions, I am happy to answer any of those if you've had a chance to look at.
I will sort of comment a few things just from the mayor's perspective. We do have, this budget contemplates, I think, six new employees, two at the police department, including money for a lateral transfer and then a records clerk. We've got a new employee in streets or maybe two. And then we have a couple in our utility, both water and sewer, as Rob's sort of rearranging the utility department. You can tell we're doing a lot of utility work lately, including putting in sewer systems. And we got a bunch of water we're going to be redoing. And so there's been a little bit of increase there in terms of, of those sorts of employees. We had a number of requests for part-time employees in different departments. It's my thought that I really want to hire full-time employees. And we're, we'll spend some time, first part of next year, sort of looking at, is there some combined stuff that we can do? There's not any money in here for the diversity council's request at this point, so that is not in here. And a few other part-time employee requests are not in here. I think on the, on the non-recurring stuff, again, I think when we have the fund balance, I think we did a pretty good job of getting most of the non-recurring stuff sort of handled with the asks that we had. I would say two things. This budget does contemplate another half a million dollars in the rainy day fund. That would take it to slightly more than $2 million, which is really double what our financial policies say. But as you look at the revenue, we're now fully 50% sales tax about, you know, on another, I don't know the math on utility tax, but we're really sales tax driven. And the sales tax slowdown, that really makes me get a little bit nervous. And if you look strictly at sort of the construction part that tends to slow down when the economy slows down, we have the construction retailers in our town, the number one and number two construction retailers. And I would say the number one seller of appliances are all in the City of Wenatchee. And if that slows down, we're going to want to have some rainy day fund. So I sort of felt it was appropriate to go ahead and fund that one more time. And we might even look at our policy at some point, but I seem to make sense to do that. I do want to say one other thing in terms of our reoccurring revenue and reoccurring expenses. You know, for 2018, we were able to get all of the property taxes, the general fund portion allocated to streets. And you see that in your street system, the great work that Rob and the team have done to see all, all the strip, like I don't, fins, whatever that term is you guys use. Lots of great positive, positive feedback. I sort of felt like that wasn't going to be sustainable. So we do have about a $300,000 transfer into the general fund this year. So not all of the property taxes are going to streets. So some of that's going to the Chief of Police to get another police officer and some stuff like that. So I sort of expected when you have the sort of the union contracts we have on those sorts of things. So I just want you to know that's sort of baked into the system. So, and Rob knows that. And so, but he's still planning on a $3 million next year street and then another $5 million the year after or something, or somewhere between seven and eight over the next two years. And I, I think we have enough built up in those reserve accounts to go ahead and make that, make that splash happen.
Yep.
Anything else from the big picture stuff?
I think you just about covered it.
On the revenue side, you're pretty comfortable with the sales tax numbers and utility taxes and all that?
They're probably still a little bit conservative. We could probably bump them up a little bit if we had to. But I think at this point in time, it's, I think we're pretty, pretty solid on the, on the numbers.
It's good to be conservative.
Yeah. So the next time they'll see it, will we have all of the capital items sort of in there as well?
Yep, we should. We should have all the capital.
Looking for adoption some mid-November-ish.
November 15th. All right. Thank you.
All right. Thanks, Brad. Mayor's report. Some of the mayor's report, we're going to get in executive session, so I can't talk about that stuff out here. Sort of looking at my calendar. I just need to figure out what we did this week. Seems like it's been working on Parkside, still trying to get the BHO to occupy Parkside. They're still having issues with the contractor and getting all that work done. So Allison was out there, I think, today. Just haven't quite that thing, got that thing to the finish line yet. I did meet with some of our friends from the veterans group out there. They're sort of looking for a permanent home. They don't feel like the home at the community center is as permanent as they would like. So I did meet with them. I said we would sort of keep that kind of going. I did get the chance to go out and do what we call now a fireside chat at the PSC. So met with, I don't know how many people in the room, 50 or 60 of our employees, giving them update on the city, what the budget's like, our plans for city hall and some of that sort of stuff. So that was, that was great. Transportation Council this morning, I think the ask of our local transport, our local legislators, there's some discussion that Olympia may be doing another transportation budget. I think it sort of depends on whether the carbon tax passes or doesn't pass. I think if it doesn't pass, I think there might be a plan for some folks in Olympia to look at the gas tax increase again. So we gave them, from the Transportation Council's perspective, which is the regional body, a list of projects that we want funded. And they were all basically the apple cap of the projects. So Confluence Parkway, McKeever Street Underpass, the addition to the walking bridge into South Wenatchee, and then the Douglas County proposal for Cascade. So those are clearly still the number one regional priorities, which my goal was to keep those number one for as long as possible until we get them funded. So Senator Hawkins, and then he had a couple of the transportation folks from their caucus over there as well. So, and then a host of other things that I can't even begin to remember. The governor's going to be in tomorrow to talk about mental health. So I got a meeting with him in the afternoon with some elected officials. And Allison, help plug in the rest of the stuff.
It has been crazy. I've had kind of the same schedule as you. So let me look real quick. So directors today, just gearing up for the move of the, into the federal building of our staff here.
Yeah, so just an update with that. So the, our facility folks have been up putting in walls, tearing out walls. It's really starting to look good. If you've seen the tearing up in front of it. So that's the fiber optic, dark fiber going directly from local tail across and into the building. We'll have our own lineup and they'll have one. So local tail is paying for that part of it. We paid to get it across the street. If you've noticed, the fountain is now operative. I don't know if you've got a chance to go by and see it working. So the condominium association has the fountain working down in the, on the bottom floor outside there. And we may do a few little tweaks to the lighting and maybe get, Dimitri wants a stronger pump. He wants more water coming out of it. So we're working with them on that. I think it's going pretty well.
And next Friday, we'll have kind of an idea of when the actual move of our staff will take place. And we're not anticipating having council meetings in the federal bill, well, the city hall until January. But our staff will make the move most likely at the end of November. And so we'll be working through processes to message that and make sure that we're getting that out there for where to drop off utility bills, get access to those services. So that will all be, a plan will be put together for that shortly.
And I was at the Town Toyota Center's 10-year anniversary. Hard to believe it was 10 years when that building opened. So I had a fun little night. And Charlie Voorhees, who does all of the local marketing videos, has a video for that as well. Also had a video for the Masawa on the Miss Vidal, which is really cool. If you get a chance to see that online.
It was a tearjerker.
Yeah, Charlie does a really nice job of doing those videos. So I really think if you don't have a video, you don't have anything anymore. So everyone's doing video. if you don't have a video, you don't have anything anymore. So, everyone's doing videos. They really are. It's just like, that's just, that's sort of what you do anymore. Councilmembers, anything on your committee work that we should know about?
I was involved with masala last weekend through Wings and Wheels. I had two students that I was hosting and they came in Wednesday afternoon and left early Monday morning. Sweetest girls you ever met. They cried when they had to go home.
Oh, yeah.
Made me feel bad. And the reception, it was, they really stepped it up this year. It was a great reception. And also the closing dinner was very nicely done too and the video and everything.
If you get the chance, you really got to try to do that once. It's really pretty cool to, to be involved and see the smiles and yeah, it's pretty good.
They're just so precious.
Linda was doing the masala city dance. Did they get that on video?
The masala city dance? Yeah.
Remember at the museum?
I got some of it on video.
Of you doing it?
Not me. I wasn't doing it. I was taking pictures.
Okay. I don't want, no videos of me doing that dance.
And I looked at my husband. I said, you have a choice. You can either do the dance or you can help take pictures. He goes, I'll help take pictures.
So, maybe we should get a city dance.
I think so. Why not?
We can, we've got the choreographer.
Oh, we'll be doing Zumba, right? Yeah.
Zumba city.
All right. Councilmembers, anything else for the good of the order?
You, next week's work session, you will not be here.
Yes, I will not be here next week. I'm leaving Tuesday. So, Ruth will be handling the work session. I, I do know one of the items will be, and Carrie will not be here to discuss, but she's done some research on council pay and on mayor's pay. And so, we'll get some direction from you guys as to what you want to do with that. We haven't done it in quite a while. So, there'll be updated numbers for you guys to consider. And as far as, for me, I don't care. I do think that the council members are underpaid. And I'll just say this now because I'm the one that, I won't be here on next Thursday. I think if you do something for council pay, I think we should adopt it beginning January 1 of 2022?
Twenty, oh, yeah. Yeah, it would be.
So that everyone's paid the same all the way through. You can't increase your own. If you did it effective the next election cycle, then you'd have half of you on one pay scale, half on the other. If you just did it all effective, then you could really have a clean slate and everyone would be at the same. So, that would be my recommendation to you guys. I think you guys are underpaid. And I think the record that Carrie will bring you through, Allison, probably reflects the same.
From the Wenatchee Downtown Association, a couple of items. They will be inviting the council to have, to break bread with them on the last Thursday of November, which I think is the 29th.
Yes, I have that on my calendar.
The veterans banners will be, the city will be putting those up soon, I think, like next week, something like that. They're giddy about holiday lights. It's probably another good move on the city's part. And...
They're half with our other half to get some lights up, but that's okay.
Russ Bydel, who is a member of the Downtown Association Board, had chatted with me, has chatted with me a number of times about the, the possibility of, the impact of the possibility of Schland Public Utility District maybe not a downtown. And he wants to share some thoughts with the council. Encouraged him that he could either take advantage of the before council or to check with Mayor Protim Sparza about even fitting a few minutes into the work session to talk a little bit more than three minutes in what he's been approaching the, the district about. I think it merits some consideration.
Good. We did have an interesting meeting. Was it this week or last week with the building where Goodfellow Construction moved into the top floor where the chamber is? Rory Turner and his partners are interested in doing some, quite a bit of improvement to the alleyway between the convention center and their building. And it's actually open down there and be able to use the bottom of their building for wine, for a couple wineries, tasting rooms, and sort of doling it up and making it cute and putting plants out there. Still allowing the pack to be able to back rigs in and out, but certain, more of like a Seattle alleyway or maybe a New York City alleyway. So, we're sort of working on.
If it's a Seattle alleyway, would it have a gum wall?
It might have a gum wall, yeah.
It might have what?
A gum wall.
No.
There's a Seattle, you haven't been to the Seattle?
Yes, I have. I wasn't impressed. It's disgusting.
If I could back up one more thing with Downtown Association, on Halloween, downtown's going to be pretty spectacular. We're closing off some of the avenue. The merchants will have lots of candy. There will be vehicles for people to enjoy. I think Goodfellas will bring down an excavator. It might be law enforcement and firefighting vehicles down there. There might be all sorts of stuff going on. So, Halloween downtown.
It's always a fun time.
I just put that on my calendar to make sure I'm there.
So, this isn't really city business, but I'll just throw it out there. Festival of Trees is coming up. And if anyone's interested in decorating, decorating a wreath or a mini tree, you can contact me. I would love to have you on my list of decorators.
You're asking the wrong person. I can't decorate.
I love decorating for Christmas.
Right. So, I think I entertain a motion to go in executive session and then I'll sign whatever you ladies need me signing. And then just for the record, we will not be taking any action after the executive session. So...
20 minutes?
Yeah. Yeah. 25 minutes. These are good, these are good items.
Maybe, maybe not. That's up for us to decide. You know, I make a motion that we convene in the executive session for the purpose of discussing real estate matters where we need to discuss real estate matters in the executive session for a period of time not exceeding 25 minutes.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Kula, second by Councilmember Sparza, to go into executive session and discuss real estate matters for not to exceed 25 minutes. For the record, it is 6:12 PM. Discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.